Good evening, members, and welcome to this council meeting on the 27th of July. councillor Winger said can we get through this as quickly as possible as she wants to go and watch football? And I welcome any members or our residents that we have who may be watching or will later maybe watch this later, who may be also wanting to watch the football. Before I go into the agenda, could I just ask members to just check their mobile phones to make sure that they're off or on silent, just so it saves anybody any embarrassment should they go off during meetings. Thank you. So item one, apologies, do we have any apologies?
councillor Young.
councillor Young. Could I just say councillor Young, she obviously has a lot of health issues and I just would like to point a little bit of praise in councillor Young's way as I've seen that she's been doing a lot of good work in her ward lately, which has been mentioned on social media. And I just thought, you know, she is on her own in that ward there. It's a large ward and I just wanted to make that point for the council.
Managed to get a drop.
Yeah, it's very good, yeah.
Item two, declarations of interest.
For the public, could you just advise that we do have one vacant post for the apologies because we are one down.
I've just been advised by the clerk that I should say just for the public that because we are one councillor short and currently going through due process of getting or replacing a councillor who has resigned. So that's not part of the apology, so just wanted to make that clear, thank you. Item two, declaration of interest, anybody got any interest they'd like to declare?
councillor Winger and I on the skate park matter have just come back. And also I've been involved with Paradise Residents' Association. I haven't helped them with their application but I've advised them before this.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Item three, public participation and public request to speak, do we have any public requests to speak? I see nobody here and no questions. 3.2, report of district councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate. Is there any member who wishes to make any comment at all? Councillor Winger's hoping not, I say thank you very much for that. 3.3, report from county councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate. And we obviously councillor Shonk and councillor Constantine are not here, so there is nothing from them. Moving swiftly on to item four, to minutes of council meetings to approve the minutes of ordinary meeting of the council held on the 29th of June 2022 as a true record.
Yes, second.
Seconded, all in favour? Oh, thank you for those who was keeping their hand down, thank you. Right, item five, finances including grants. 5.1, to receive a report on payments, the council is asked to note the payments authorised by the town clerk and the RFO and approve the payments above threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO.
So councillors, you have been sent a list which is generated by our account system. It shows all payments made over a thousand pounds, a total of 79,243.18. This is partly made up of confidential payments which are not printed and they are wages, tax and insurance and pensions purely because those are excluded from public. So if you could approve those, I need to...
Members, any comments? I'm looking at your councillor Green as our finance person.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
So can we have a proposal? Oh, sorry councillor Crittenden.
Yeah, I was just looking through and wondering about the same issue that I raised last time about where names are mentioned. And I'm not sure if there's any that are maybe confidential, redacted or not, but I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just approving the over a thousand and then I'll go through the others.
Okay.
That's great.
Perhaps I just comment on that. I did query why Laura Townclerk was paying out of the round account.
I can answer that.
I did receive an answer which was the bank is trying to...
We are struggling getting the credit cards sorted. They've actually issued or tried to issue credit cards to the former town clerk and myself. Neither of us, he certainly wouldn't have a credit card and I shouldn't have one. And I'm now waiting for them to issue to the three people that they should be issuing to, but we are struggling at the moment. And hence why Laura and other members of staff are spending their own money, but I very swiftly refund it. So it's in hand, we're just trying to figure it out.
This shouldn't be happened. We will have to do something.
Totally agree, it's totally wrong that she should have to do that. Members, your proposal from me is that we approve everything over a thousand pound? And if there are seconders for that?
Yes, second.
All in favour? Thank you.
The next part is all those to a thousand pound which is within the delegated powers of your town clerk as responsible financial officer. They're all detailed here. If you are seeing names, one name is an allotment site rep, the second one down, that's quite normal. Other names you have, your PR for Active Ramsgate should be named. Some people, Mr Wright does filming mostly for the mayor, his account is in his name, so he is paid that way. I don't think there are any others, most do have company names.
I couldn't see any allocation through that. Wanted to check that.
Yeah. How we pay on the bank account is how I input onto the system, but I'll see if I can sort of do something different on the system if I can to block them out, maybe make them confidential is one way, but I will have to look into it. So with these, you need to just note them.
Yeah, so members, sorry.
I was going to propose.
Note those. Yes, councillor Magness.
My name is in here with the ward grant, is it normal to put when you claim the ward grant?
The ward's in here. Yeah, councillors, your ward grant does go out in your name. Obviously it's not paid to you, it will go to a company or a community group. But the details on here are so that we know whose ward fund was spent.
So members, you're asked to note that, all in favour of noting that?
No.
It's carried.
That's item done, yeah.
Thank you, that's that, right, completed. Yeah, on one. 5.2, to receive a written report from a deputy town clerk, finance officer in respect to the Ramsgate fund and to make decisions in respect of five grant applications contained there.
Yeah, sure, of course. The Ramsgate fund is 35,000, that's your budget. The maximum that can be given is 10%, so 3,500. Awards to date are 5,626 and the balance remaining is 29,374. Your first application is from the Residents' Association of Paradise. Grant requested is 3,225.16. It's towards reinstatement of heritage lighting on the street. The actual cost is expected to reach 6,450, so they're just under our maximum at 3,225.16. So this is to actually, they have approached KCC. 50% of the costs for the hardware and contractor fees which they will supply and they're hoping to secure the remaining 50% from RTC.
Thank you Chair. Are they not going to put any money in themselves for this? The Residents' Association have they no funding themselves if they're taking it all out from us and KCC?
Basically, they don't have any accounts, but I think councillor Austin might be able to advise on...
They're newly set up Residents' Association, they don't have any funding, but they have said that if we were not able to offer them the whole amount, they probably have a whip round and want to get revenue from sales.
That's just Stuart.
Thank you Chair, just so I can be clear, we are allowed to use this money to do something which would ordinarily be the responsibility of the county councillor, are we? Because providing the appropriate lighting is the responsibility of the council, but this is a departure from appropriate to upgrade or whatever word you would like to use. So we're not going to fall foul of the rules if we allocate this money, are we?
I have to say, I have a difficulty with this in that, you know, the KCC, you know, they're getting 50% of the KCC, you know, that means Ramsgate Town Council, if we give them the grant, are going to be paying for the rest of the lighting which should come from KCC. And I have a difficulty with it, not the difficulty with them wanting to do what they want to do, but I have a difficulty with us providing money for KCC. Councillor Green?
Just to answer Stuart's point, yes, KCC do have a statutory responsibility to provide street lighting, but they don't have a statutory responsibility to convert to heritage looking lamp standards. So I think we are within the rules. The rules for the Ramsgate fund just say it should not replace lost funding from KCC.
Then the ongoing maintenance, sorry Chair, the ongoing maintenance would remain with Ramsgate Town Council?
No, I think KCC have agreed, the table look after them.
Okay, thank you.
If there's an approved conversion kit which we choose elsewhere in Ramsgate.
Councillor Austin?
KCC have said that they know that lighting is their responsibility, they will continue to be responsible, but that if this conversion happens, this is how much it will cost. And the KCC funding, as I understand it, is actually part of councillor Constantine's award fund, not from KCC.
I was just going to ask if whether the KCC councillors have been involved. Any other councillor?
Let us just follow on from the KCC because there is also Liverpool Law and Spencer Square that have got similar issues and could be opening the floodgates. But ongoing maintenance, although KCC have agreed ongoing maintenance, the new lamps are not in any patch the same quality as the last cast iron. And on Nelson Crescent, we've had the tops blow off of some of them and they have been replaced. So have KCC committed to, if there's damage to the heritage lamp posts, will they replace with like for like or will they go back to the ugly things we've got?
Can I just interject now, just to say that what this sounds like is that obviously the money's not come from, the money's come from KCC but through the local KCC councillor and not from the council itself per se. And therefore I would think that KCC would find it difficult, well, wouldn't actually want to replace them. If one gets knocked down by a car.
They might replace them.
No, they haven't given the money in the first place.
Well, we waited two years on Addington Street for replacement lamp.
Anyway, back out to members, any other members?
We have these converted lamp posts, converted to heritage style, all over Ramsgate. KCC have no problem replacing it.
Just a point I want to invite, but members, anybody else, any comment on this?
Within our application, it wasn't clear to me that they'd actually secured the grant from the KCC councillors. If that's true and if we do make a grant, I think we need to still relate that it needs to be spent in this financial year. We just want to hand it over in the hopes that they'll fund the funds.
My understanding is that they have secured that grant, but I can't guarantee that.
Okay, members, anybody wants to make a proposal?
I propose that we grant them.
Yeah, I second that.
Any members, all in favour, please show. One, two, three, four, five, six, those against? One, two.
Abstain.
I haven't got there yet.
Looked at me.
Those are saying? One, two, three, that is carried. Thank you, members.
Thank you. The next application, RF4, is from the Royal Harbour of Ramsgate 200. Projected expenditure is 60,000, they're asking for the maximum that they can be awarded, which is 3,500 pounds. The funding is requested to go towards completing the bronze of Dominic Grant's statue of King George IV. Council has awarded funding before. They have a crowdfunding page set up and to date they've managed to raise 11,000 pounds, which is what they, that's all they have. The applicant states that RTC accepted the statue as a gift and the minute from the meeting held on the 4th of November 2020 states, the council is prepared to accept the gift but only on the basis that the council incurs no future costs for insurance and replacement. So that was resolved by council back in November 2020. We are looking at funding, but I thought I should advise council that they are saying we've taken it on as a gift. But yes, we did, but as long as it doesn't cost the council any further money. So they are asking for 3,500 to create a bronze from the rubber mould, excuse me, which was made from what was left of the statue following the death of Dominic Grant, the sculptor, unfortunately.
Members, any comments?
Do we know who's plan to set it up on the plant?
No.
No, no, you need to go get bronze first.
Yeah, I know, but once it is bronze.
No, I don't believe that that's got anywhere yet as to the location.
Yeah, the location was mooted.
Yes, but there's been nothing definite and as it's gifted to us, then it's up to us as to where it will go.
Mooted, but not from KCC, I believe, I mean, we're talking about residents that have received in certain places. That's a whole different ball game, isn't it?
Councillor Piper?
Thank you Chair, I'd like to propose that we give them the money that they've asked for because this was started a long time ago and I think we need to as a council to see through certain statue being finished and erected because it is a symbol of our Royal Harbour and it's the only one in the UK.
That's great.
Usually the council's grants for this sort of things are mainly to show our support and in this case, we've already done that by giving them a grant previously of nearly 3,000, I think. Although I'm not against this, I personally would not grant it now, but indicate when they get nearer their target to come back to us.
I agree.
Anybody else, any?
I think in that line, can I just double check, how much have they got towards the 60,000?
11,000.
It's not a lot, is it?
I think as well, I did talk to Dominic's wife when she had a store down trying to collect money at the Jubilee event, no, yes, Jubilee event, and bumped into Brenda Blessing he was talking to and she advised me that Brenda Blessing is giving them 10,000 pounds. Whether that 11,000 includes Brenda Blessing, 10,000, I don't know. But are you making that as a proposal? Sorry.
Same as you already had.
Have a proposal.
Yes, sorry councillor Piper, yes, Bridget, pardon.
I mean, this is my experience because I like the idea, but we could, I think giving them the money would actually help increase that figure. And like Addington Street, we've cancelled the Addington Street Revival Fair, so we know we've got to give the money back because we haven't actually said what we, we're not going to do what we promised to do. So, you know, we don't have any issue with sending that money back because there was sort of a contractual agreement between our application. I'd quite like to give them the money because that helps with this figure to go up, but on the understanding that if it's never finished, it comes back to us.
But it will never be finished.
Well, then it comes back to us, maybe we give them a set period to get closer to 60,000.
I'm inclined to say we agree that they can have the money, but not until they reach a certain level of fundraising of their own.
This is what councillor Green was saying.
I can't always hear what comes.
Councillor, anything?
I've never been keen on this anyway, so I mean, that's just by the by. But I also think that we do have to take into consideration, as councillor Crittenden has often said before, the nature of the particular person and what's best for Ramsgate and I'm not sure that this is it.
Okay, we have a proposal to give the full amount, is there a second for that? Councillor Beazley? So can we vote on that?
Can we put an amendment to that in line of, we do accept that? You have to do the proposal, you have to vote on it and then another one. Sorry Chair.
You take the amendment.
You can take the amendment first if you're coming up, but someone's got to second the amendment first. What is your amendment councillor Green?
Only that along with, I think what councillor Green was saying was that once they reach a certain level of fundraising, the money.
What's that level?
I would say 30,000.
Well, that's only half, isn't it?
It's still only half.
So what difference would that make? I'm just asking you the question, I'm not trying to be, I'm just asking the question.
Encouragement for the continued fundraising, it could be a higher figure than that, we would have to agree.
I'm just finding that awkward.
Can I just say something? Members, we had an applicant come back to us last council meeting asking for an extension on the time of using the money that they were awarded, which you agreed. With the Ramsgate fund, they do have six months to use the money. In this case, they probably won't be able to do that. So they would have to come back to us for an extension, you know, for them to hold on to the money and then use it at a later time, as did the last people that applied. So you extended from September to January for the last applicant from the last meeting. So bear that in mind, they are supposed to use the money within a period of time.
Okay, do you want your amendment placed as you've just stated, that's 30,000 pounds?
Only if the original proposer agrees. Oh, my dear, just give them the money, okay, so that...
Okay, so we have the proposal to give them the full amount, okay, all those in favour, please show. Five, six, six, four, all those against? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's lost. Okay, so.
That falls.
That falls, so there's no money to be given unless someone else comes up with another proposal.
I propose that we let them know that we're not against the project, but ask them to come back to us funding when they're nearer to reaching their target.
Okay, I don't think we need a vote on that, I think we just can advise, go back to the applicant and advise them of that, that they can come back in when they think they get it free for its bronze. We do it that way.
Chair, perhaps we could point out, as the deputy town clerk has said.
Yeah, it's got to be done in six months. It's got to be spent.
I think the key thing also Chair is that if we give them that money and it takes them two years to finish it, then we're not allowing another group to have that money.
Yes, indeed, indeed.
I like money to be saved.
Next one?
Next one, RF5 is the Heritage Lab CIC. Total projected expenditure is 5,000 pounds, the grant requested is 3,500. Funding is sought towards the cost of a disabled toilet within the proposed conversion of the Granville Bars into the Pugin Studios. Heritage Lab CIC presented its plans for the Granville Bars to council on the 6th of July. The applicant has advised that the disabled toilet will be located on the upper ground floor of the premises and serve the bar, restaurant, performance seats and viewing area if they are able to open that area during phase one of the project. The artist studios will be located in the basement where an accessible lift will be put in during phase two of the works. I did ask them to clarify exactly what this disabled toilet would be for because they need to get a restaurant bar up and running in order to further fund the project. So they did clarify and there will be access for the artist studios in the basement.
If I may, members, we're just going back to what we just talked about, is this going to be done within six months? It doesn't look like that would be the case, bearing in mind the large development that's going to be taking place there. But I was just asking you to bear that in mind. Members, any comments?
I'd quite like for them to have the money, but I think not now. I think it's exactly the same as the last issue. We advise them that to come back to us when they actually need the money and they start work.
I agree with that, anybody else?
Yeah, that's what, yes, I'm totally agree with that too.
So I think this time we do have to have a motion because we haven't decided, we had a motion and it fell. So I think this time we do need to have a proposal that that takes place. So councillor Green, you're proposing?
I'd like to propose, I mean, disability access is always, so I've got it.
Green councillor Winger, that's what.
You looked at me, so I got it. That's all you need to do is look at me. I'd like to propose that we support the funding because it is very important to us. But the money's withheld until they're in an actual position to undertake the work.
That would mean that it's allocated though, surely?
No, it can't be allocated.
Can't allocate it.
They can't spend it in six months.
So you basically were going to propose, we don't give them any money, but we'd like for them to come back to us in the future, is what we were saying. Let me propose that.
I'll second that.
Councillor Nixon's proposing, councillor Green's proposing.
Yes, however.
But sadly the Ramsgate fund, money's have to be spent within six months, so can they come back to us when they can spend it within six months?
Councillor Piper? Did you have a hand up?
Yeah, I did, but then I thought, well, you know. At the end of the day, we've either got to say yes or we've got to say no. If we don't think they're going to spend the money within this financial period according to these rules, then the answer's no. If we think they are going to require the money, then we can allocate it, set it aside, as we've done before for other grants. then we can allocate it, set it aside, as we've done before for other grants.
Yeah.
Um, because our decreasing balance during this period will eventually get to the point where if they come back and say, we've got it, we haven't got enough money left, because we're giving it away to someone else.
Yeah.
So it seems to me we've either got to allocate it for them, on the understanding that if they haven't formally, uh, uh, applied for it with one month to go before this particular deadline, we'll give it to someone else and invite them to apply again. Otherwise, we might just as well say, not at this time.
Can, can we make that clear, Eileen, if you, you may have got a lot of scribbling out there.
Or you could write.
Councillor Crittenden?
Huxley.
You're doing well tonight.
You had your finger up, I'll beg your pardon, his fingers, that one, whatever. Councillor Huxley. Beg, it's been a long day, you know that, that's been a long day.
I'm just saying, Chair, um, uh, this Heritage Lab C I C got a large amount of money from central government through R M P, so why do we have to pay for their toilet? Sorry, I don't, I think.
Well, they haven't got enough, have they?
It's like a four month.
Haven't got enough, councillor Nixley?
I think my only concern about this, because I'm, for disabled access and everything, I'm all for it, my only concern about this is, is it just goes into a pot that they're going to be doing the building up, and I, and I really want the disabled toilet for them, do you know what I mean, and I think that's why I would say no now, and I get councillor Piper's point, and it's very relevant, because it's a case of like, right, well, if you, you know, if we say yes, we say yes, and they can reapply and everything. So either way, I'd, I'd, I'd be okay with it, but I want it for that toilet, I don't just want it to go into this lump sum of money that they're acquiring, because they haven't got anywhere near it, they did quite a good presentation, you know, with, with what they needed to get and what they've got so far, but if we're going to give it for that toilet, I want it for that toilet, hence the, no.
I agree.
E- equally, yes, if it's for the toilet.
Yeah, I, I agree. So.
So, currently.
Councillor Makerson, did you, I thought you, you had, you was, you was, you was pointing up in your ear, councillor Makerson. Councillor Morgan, do you want to say?
I'll do it then. Just reminded the football.
About providing a disabled toilet in that building, isn't it down to the people who own the building to do it? Don't they have to provide disabled toilet facilities? And if so, why are we paying for it?
Well, we're not paying for it.
Good.
Pay for part of it. That's, that's if you allow it to happen.
But because this is a C I C and they're doing the work, and they're getting money to do the work, then yes, they do need to provide one, hence the, and they need to get the money for it, so, so that, so to answer your question, yes, they do need to provide one, and, and yes, they are going to pay for it, and to pay for it, because they're a C I C, they're looking for funding, so it sort of like ticks all the boxes that you're saying. So if that makes sense.
Yes, but I still think that even if they are a C I C, they would still have money to put in a disabled toilet.
They have, they, they haven't got anywhere near enough, and they've got a huge amount of money, but not enough for the project from, from, from the presentation that they gave.
Councillor Green?
Well, just a comment, they're not the owners of the building, they're tenants.
No, exactly, that's true.
Councillor Crittenden, you did have your finger up.
I did have my finger up on this occasion. Um, there is one little wording here that is worrying me, um, and it's the word if. And it says, um, if they are able to open that area during phase one of the project, it doesn't actually sound that certain.
Well, let me just go back to my proposal, don't we, I proposed the money, they can come back to us, and we just second that and vote on it. We're not against it, we, we just think it's not yet.
Yeah, I'll go.
I'll second that, yes.
Yeah.
It makes it simple, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's, it's, we should have it as simple as possible.
Okay, members, we have support in, in principle, uh, for them to come back when, uh, the money can be spent within, basically in this, within this financial year, in this budget.
Okay, you all right with that? Everybody, is there a second for that, we've got a second?
Yes, we have.
Okay, all in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried.
Thank you, um, next one is, um, Ramsgate Arts Barge. The project, as we know, is the barge, which is outside, and the total expenditure for the, the whole project is three hundred thousand pounds. They're asking for two thousand eight hundred ninety-two pounds. Funding is sought towards the purchase of mixed power tools, site safety equipment, P P E equipment, as detailed on page five of the application. They have costs and quotes from B and Q Screwfix and Wicks, also on page five of the application. The, the equipment is required to enable students from East Kent College Group to assist with the renovation of the vessel alongside a hundred plus volunteers. Um, pages four and five of the application detail the responses from the programme director, brackets, construction, and industry, liaison officer of East Kent College Group welcoming the opportunity to assist with the project. Councillor, to decide, please, two thousand eight hundred ninety-two.
I don't know who was first, I'll take, councillor, councillor Green?
Um, could I ask, have they told us what they did with that previous grant?
It was a thousand pounds, it was only a thousand pounds.
Which is P P E, et cetera, et cetera.
Hello?
But this, it's in a very different position, yeah. I don't think they raised any.
They gave them a thousand pounds?
Yeah.
Have they raised so far, like our funding? In the application, which you will.
From the fight, Nick.
Campbell said sink it, Chair.
Councillor Piper first, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair, um, yes, uh, councillor Campbell did say take it out into the ocean and just sink it. And I still think that stands, and I don't think we ought to give them any money whatsoever. There's just, it's such an eyesore, there isn't enough money in the world to make that look a presentable project for anybody, and every time you come down with a harbinger, you think that hideous rust bucket is still there. So I propose that we don't give them any money at all.
No, no, but.
Councillor Nixley?
I have to disagree with councillor, I'm afraid there, I, I think that this project has moved forward quite a bit, actually. And I rather like the idea, I mean, they seem to have local, um, young people involved in this, it's being hosted, there's work, there's volunteers, um, East Kent College, et cetera, I think we should give them some money.
Councillor Nixley?
Just, um, it has, I, I, I've, I've, I've found out a lot about it recently and what's going on, and one of the things that I'm also really impressed with is Project Motor House is also, um, it's, uh, Project Motor House is a work that, um, Janet Fielding's done some absolutely sterling work with, uh, the Royal Academy, children doing film and photography and stuff like that, and, um, that's taking a sort of like a new lease of life, and it is now going to go into the Arts Barge, and they are working again with the Royal Academy, and Royal Harbour, sorry, beg your pardon, thank you. Um, and there's, uh, great plans for, for the work that they're going to be doing, and I back that wholeheartedly. So I, I get the point of like, maybe it's not the most wonderful thing, and I didn't particularly like the planning application for the design, although I did think that later, it was like World War One camouflage, et cetera, et cetera. But with what's going on and what the potential they've got, as well as what's actually in the pipeline for what they're doing, I am actually really impressed, I'd give them the whole lot.
I, I'd like to ask Cam, and it's, sorry, Jane, was it you before me? No, no, you were, I'd like to ask how many people in this room have actually visited the Arts Barge, because I, I can tell you, I, it's Marmite, uh, and I was very, uh, dismissive of it actually initially, but I decided, uh, I would try and at least go and, and, and listen to what Kevin had to say, so I, and, um, my friend Tony, who was an expert in boats, actually says that boat is a fabulous example of a Dutch barge. The back end of it apparently stunningly beautiful it is, it's very unusual. It's, uh, it's, it, it's due to go up on the slipway, I spent an afternoon, I spent an afternoon in the belly of the boat. Kevin has single-handedly begun to strip the inside out, because he hasn't got health and safety in place to have his volunteers on board. I will be one of those people that will volunteer. I especially liked, I listened to him for, it was about two and a half hours, because I've become fascinated by the inside of boats, incredible space. I was, you know, I'm always going to champion young people, and I was especially pleased with the way he's going to build young people into this project. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of dismissiveness about the licence, that, that, the application that's going in, but I think there's, he's not going to be running any sort of nightclub on that boat, it's not his style, it's not the way he works. We need to look at the history of this boat, it was brought in by two other people, literally towed into the harbour, and then they ran off and left it. Kevin took that on, he's been paying his mooring fees at fifteen grand a year, I think. He's a totally genuine guy, I've got a really good feeling and sense about him. He's putting every effort into it he possibly can to try and turn that around, and he wants to involve young people in, in this, in a, in a way where they get in a, in a maritime way, which is our heritage, where they actually get direct experience of working on, 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 on vessels, and that hasn't happened. They've got the support of the Royal Harbour Academy, they've got the support of Project Motor House, Janet was a person I sent down there. I would implore any one of you to, I'm, I'm happy to liaise with Kevin, to go on that boat and listen to him. It's a beautiful vessel, it's in a bit of a state at the moment, uh, but I do believe his plans, if they come to fruition, uh, will, will, will make a massive difference. I wasn't, I wasn't overimpressed with the, the stripey hull, but I didn't understand either that, because that is a zigzag thing they used in World War Two, so that was me just getting things wrong. Uh, so I, I would like, I, you know, I'm going to support giving them the whole lot, because I think.
You're in favour then?
Yeah.
You just said that at the start.
I, I was just, to start with, what I'm saying is, go and try and conquer, or at least listen to the guy, and if you're still dismiss, if you're still dismissive.
I just want, so I, I, I am no expert on this project, and I haven't been to visit, but I am a person who spent thirty or forty years working in further adult education. Realistic work opportunities for young people in further education colleges are few and far between in this kind of a field. Anything that gives our young people opportunities to actually get their, get their hands on a real project has got to be worth our consideration, very least.
Thank you, councillor Green?
I think councillor, I think it's always been.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, and I neglected to mention it, when, um, councillor Nixley said about Project, um, Motor House. Project Motor House is shutting this week, which I don't know everyone's aware of that, so this is why that work will be valuable, carried on, on the barge, and Janet Fielding has been liaising with them, so. And I'm a trustee of Project Motor House, so.
I just wanted to say that when, um, they came to do a presentation here, um, councillor Lindon Stewart, Piper were, um, and I attended the presentation that we had just did here. We all, it was just a three of us, yeah, we all had very serious concerns about it. But I do think that they have actually moved massively on since then, and as councillor Austin has said, I think, um, that what we have before us, and the purpose of this money that we have before us here, I very much support.
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Piper?
I'll try and agree. Lots of emotive stuff being talked about here, and it's lovely and good to have job opportunities for young people. I would have to say, and I beg your indulgence, if we had an airport, there'd be some fantastic opportunities for young people to get away and experience. Are members aware that there is a Dutch, I mean, that is the heritage part of Ramsgate Harbour? It is currently being occupied by a boat that is not British. Secondly, it's meant to be a temporary mooring point, and when he came to do this presentation here, he did say he would be moving it, and he hasn't. Obviously, a load of deep and no fun on me, and finally, there is an identical Dutch barge up the river, near Tilbury, on sale, fully refurbished to an exceptionally high standard, and it's one hundred and seventy thousand pounds for sale if you want it.
Sounds like a snitch, you drive by it.
Is this fellow going to pour three hundred grand into a boat that's never going to be worth more than two?
But that's not actually.
I, I just.
Well, I, I wasn't sure whose hand went up first, was it yours?
I just beg your.
Let's put a rule on the line, okay?
The history of that place is to do with the two bloody pontoons that we've got there. The barge was in, the barge was in the place of one of those pontoons before Kevin got hold of it. Kevin got, Kevin then ended up with the barge, he was, the barge, the barge was then moved because the pontoon needed to need take that space. Kevin would move that barge tomorrow if somebody would tell him where to move it.
I'm going to intercede as the Chair, I'm going to intercede as the, the Chair, just to move this on, I think it's pretty clear. A proposal, thank you, councillor.
The whole lot?
No, no, you've got, I didn't ask you.
She didn't, no.
A proposal that we give them the, the full amount?
Don't give them any. You did, yes, I did.
You did propose that you don't give any, so, let's, let's see, we did have a proposal first, that we don't give them any money. Is there a second for that proposal? Okay, so we have a proposal and a second, all those in favour of not giving the, not giving them any money? One, two, three, four, five. Those against, not giving them any, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, so that proposal is lost, second proposal.
I propose that we give them the full amount.
Seconded.
You've heard that, all those in favour, please show. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, four, because against. One, two, three, four, five, against. So that's, so that is now carried.
Anybody want to visit, I'll arrange it.
Next one, please.
Um, RF seven, this is, this has come from the Freedom Road Project, uh, for, um, what they are calling band. They're asking for the three, uh, maximum of three thousand five hundred towards a project costing four thousand nine hundred pounds. Funding is sought towards the cost of a specialist education facilit, facilitator to deliver twelve school sessions over three months in school and two sessions with parents. Um, fourteen hundred will be provided by Freedom Road Project for, for mini bus transport and programme materials, so they're, they are putting money in themselves. The applicant states, um, as part of the band project, which explores the lives of US servicemen based in Manston from nineteen fifty-one to nineteen fifty-seven, with a focus on the black servicemen based in Ramsgate during this time. Uh, Ramsgate had the black servicemen, and the other servicemen went to Margate. We aim to facilitate a twelve week programme exploring the lives of the servicemen and Ramsgate residents during this time, and share this rich and little known heritage with Viking Academy Group of Schools. Um, they, they go on to say, uh, this will culminate into a piece of artwork developed by the children, which will be exhibited at Turner Contemporary from February to May in twenty twenty-three, as part of the exhibition component of the project. The initial education programme will be at Ramsgate Arts Primary School, and then will roll out across the Viking Academy Group of Schools in Ramsgate. We will also hold an event in Ellington Park to share the incredible stories that the research has revealed. Um, and they plan to involve, um, our community, elderly community that will remember that time. Um, over to councillor, thank you.
Members?
Well, I've just.
Just a comment. Not really a capital project.
It, and it doesn't sit with events either.
I know, I was saying it would normally be a capital. I mean, I'm quite intrigued by it. It should be. Whatever comes out of it, I think should be shared more, more widely across the town.
Is there a, is the, if, if this doesn't fit the criteria, do we have any, uh, leeway at all?
I think so, because, because we've got a new grant application form, which covers all funding. Um, currently I've got some, this is the first lady, the first person to actually use a new form. Um, I'm saying Ramsgate Fund, because I'm, I know it doesn't.
Okay, okay.
So, um, I think, I don't think there's a problem with funding it.
There is a creation of materials, isn't there?
Item three in our guidelines say it should normally be used.
Normally, yeah.
Normally.
Says normally, normally, yeah, I think councillor changed that wording to allow a little bit of leeway.
Uh, who was first, you councillor Morgan?
Thank you. Uh, if we're going to do this, uh, and they're going to take the whole of this, Manston, and the, uh, the people who were there, the US servicemen, uh, are we also going to include the black servicemen who shot and killed the servicemen at Manston?
That is, well, to be, to be, to be quite honest.
History.
To be quite honest, you, you can't change history.
Yeah, that's what I say, it is history.
And it's part, it's part and parcel of what was there, so there's lessons to be learnt, the children who are going to take part in this will learn from that, that, and I, I don't know whether that's going to be part of it, but they would learn from it anyway.
Yeah, I think she did come here and did a visit.
Yeah, she did.
Uh, councillor Piper?
Thank you, Chair, um, I would be much more confident with this if it said. we have had invitations from the schools across the region to take this project in. Clearly they haven't and there's this suggestion that they're just gonna roll it out into schools. You can't do that. Married to a teacher for thirty five minutes. You cannot just pitch up at schools and make various presentations. You need to be formally invited, vetted and all the rest of that stuff. The other thing is, this was Americans, what's it got to do with me?
About Manston.
Yeah, Manston.
So what's American behaviour and heritage got to do with young children in the UK?
Members, members, please, one at a time. Uh, councillor Crittenden and councillor Austin.
I just wanted to say broadly, I support the, um, the educational side of it. I would actually, um, listening to what councillor Piper has just said, um, I'm not sure what reassurance there is that they would then have the invitations into school. But I certainly like the history of, of Manston and, um, the, the heritage. This is a very, very little known, like it says here, heritage. And so in principle, leaning towards supporting it, I'm still open to listening to what.
Specialist Education Facilitators.
Councillor Austin was after me, Austin.
Clear the finger around that one, councillor Austin.
Um, this obviously, the, um, members, some members came to the pre-meeting where Sabina Dazir talked about the plans for a, um, exhibition at the Turner Contemporary. And this is the sort of sister project of that, if you will, because it's about working with, with young people. My understanding is that they have an invitation from the Ramsgate Arts, uh, School and, and from the Viking Academy Group. That is, that is, that is my understanding, I can't absolutely guarantee that, but my, that is my understanding. That they have invitations from, from those two.
Councillor May?
I think David was.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
It was on that theme, I think. They do say that it will be delivered to those two.
Yeah.
School groups, but we could always put a condition in. To any crowd.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is something we should be exceptionally proud of because I know the Freedom Road Project, which is basically a jazz, a, a, a jazz, uh, a jazz, uh, piece.
Musical.
A jazz musical thing, has been all over the country and it's been written by a Ramsgate-based, a beautiful Ramsgate jazz singer and also Jessica, I don't know the other, Jessica who lives in, in Margate. So this is something we should be, and it's got rave reviews wherever it's gone. I'm lucky, I've bought four tickets, four tickets for, for the one in Margate. I mean, we should be exceptionally proud that we've got people who can operate at this level and they actually live in Ramsgate and Thanet. I love the introduction of schools. You know I know, uh, the Royal Harbour Academy, which is part of the Vikings Academy Group of Schools. And I know the head there would, would welcome this into the school as a, as a different sort of activity that is about a different aspect of our, of our, of our heritage. A very important aspect of our heritage because there are prob, there, there may well be, uh, surviving relatives whose fathers were black servicemen, yeah.
Thank you. Um, is anybody ready for a proposal?
I propose that we accept it.
I second that. The three thousand.
That you give that money? Yeah, we're not accepting three thousand.
We're gonna be giving you that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Councillor Rara? Um, so all in favour, please show. Okay, those are gains. Uh, it's carried.
You have extensions?
Yes.
Sorry, extension.
I have a extension too there.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Presentation was excellent, it was all about the races of in Ramsgate.
Confused because it's normally me.
Normally, yeah. Um.
One more.
One more.
Um. Do you want us to leave the room? We won't, no.
Laura gave you a dispensation.
Yes, she did, yeah.
Did she? This, this is its reference to our.
Type of tribute.
Ramsgate Skate Park Project, at the last council meeting, they were awarded three thousand pounds, uh, towards, um, purchasing a secondhand mobile skate park. The, there was a caveat placed on that award, um, that the mobile skate park would only be used within Ramsgate. However, the applicant has responded as follows. Although our focus is on Ramsgate and we expect almost all the use of the facility to be here, a requirement that we only ever operate in Ramsgate as a condition of RTC's funding would oblige us to turn down the opportunity to do occasional one-off events elsewhere in Thanet, which members see as an opportunity to promote Ramsgate and the skate park project. We would also want to be able to consider charging for the occasional use of the mobile skate park outside Ramsgate to help us generate funds for our longer term and very expensive project. We would be grateful if councillor would consider an amendment to the conditions for funding on this basis, thank you.
Members? Councillor Piper?
Could we be reminded how much the total was for the whole project, please?
Six, six thousand, wasn't it? It was six thousand. Six thousand for the, for the, for the stage of the project, but the whole project is going to be hundreds of thousands.
The FAR Academy, the FAR Academy had a, a skateboard trailer. It, it's, it's a big trailer with bits of a skateboard that can be put out anywhere on any, on in any tarmac. And we, our skate park facilities for our kids are shocking. So it was an opportunity that we thought would be really good to.
So let's, can I just interject, sorry, is it six?
Six thousand, it was six thousand.
To buy, to buy.
To purchase it.
The trailer, yeah. The mobile skate park, six thousand from the skate park project funds.
On the trailer or?
It's on, it's, it all fits on the trailer, it's a specially adapted trailer to.
Six thousand.
Yeah. It's a, it's a big thing because bits of skate park equipment.
I'm sorry, chair, through the chair, and then other expenses were for the.
It's for later stages of work on the, on the skate park at the war wreck if, if we get approval from TDC and we can, to apply for supporting them.
It's a, it's a bigger project that hopefully we'll see the refurbishment of the war wreck.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Green.
My reason for proposing the condition is those of us that have been around a while know that this has happened before. Councillor Quart, for Regeneration Church and Hangten.
Don't mention.
Yes.
Mobiles, um, skate park, exactly this. Now, I don't know what's happened to it, now that Hangten are.
Need to ask more.
And no longer there.
I would suggest.
No more global hub.
That, that we inquire about that.
I would agree.
I agree.
Ramsgate gave them another voice.
Yes, yeah.
I, I don't think it's really been used in Ramsgate. That's, that's my problem, it's been used in Margate, Broadstairs and various other places. So, so I fear, I fear that exactly the same thing will happen to this. And that's why the simple condition that it must be used in Ramsgate, if they've won the money, fair enough.
Yeah, councillor Crittenden.
I think, um, the definition of occasion might be helpful. Yes.
What does that mean?
Well, simply, ninety, ninety percent, ninety-five percent of its use is guaranteed to be in Ramsgate and the rest will come up on a very occasional basis. We are all Ramsgate people on the skate park project group, we are all committed to the, the development of this in Ramsgate. It's not the, the.
Haven't said that in the reply.
I, I haven't said it in my reply, no. Yeah, not myself.
Councillor Nixie?
I think that's what I was going to say as well, I mean, I think the fact that it's the Ramsgate Skate Park Project and they are Ramsgate people that are doing this for here, I'd be more inclined to say yes to the changes with the idea that it is this group that wants this for Ramsgate. Whereas the Global Regeneration Church, which is a dodgy subject all the way down the line at the moment, isn't it? Were not necessarily just Ramsgate focused, I think this group would be. I absolutely agree with what councillor Green says though, because we've been bitten once before. But I would be more inclined, because it's this group, to say yes to it.
Perhaps we could come back to council and, and on a, on a, uh, an occasional basis and say, we want to be able to, to take the skate park to X. Are you happy with that? We could do this on an individual basis, but it just creates lots of extra work.
I, I wouldn't agree to that, I don't see what that, councillor Piper?
Just wondering if we could relay to the group, um, I have access to funds to give them all of it, more than six thousand pounds. Um, and would personally not have any objection to them moving it out of Ramsgate occasionally and charging for that facility. Um, so I'll just put that on table. They've applied for three.
Hang on a minute.
Yeah, there will be all sorts of.
They will do all sorts of other things, but to actually purchase the thing, they've applied for three. We have access to money to give them.
I think we, when, I mean, Cozy, I'll go back to our caravan, I think the same, a similar thing was sort of not forced on us, but, 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 okay, I use the word forced because I can't at the moment think of another word, but we've suggested Cozy.
Forget it's a good word.
So it's Cozy and, you know, Covid hit us, she is up and functioning and I think she's done about ten, ten different events, they've all been in Ramsgate. But she may well go to the Cartoon Fest in Horn Bay and for me, that is an opportunity for Cozy to sell Ramsgate as well. And I, and I actually think that this is an opportunity for us to sell Ramsgate, uh, to sell the fact that Ram, as a, as a, we're supporting activities for young people. We're actually taking that outside of Ramsgate to benefit other young people. And the very nature of skateboarding is, I, I'm told by kids that skateboard, because we've got some young people on our, on our committees, on, on the group as well, which is very unusual, is that they like to travel, uh, to different skate parks. Well, not necessarily on the skate parks, but they like, they visit each other's skate park in facilities. And given the fact we have some rivalry between young people, uh, out in the towns, then I think this is another way to break down barriers between young people as well.
Okay, um, but I think we've probably exhausted this round. Um, so can we have a, did you?
Yes, on the subject of the Globe Regeneration Church and I was going to say, can we write to them and ask them about that? Of what's happened to it?
They don't exist anymore.
I know they don't, presumably, assets, yeah.
I mean, what everybody knows, they're on companies' house, yeah, got locations.
I already noted that. Um, okay, members, anybody got a proposal, please?
I propose that we accept the amendment for occasional use of mobile skate park outside of Ramsgate on the basis that charges will be made when that happens. If you can tidy that wording up slightly.
Well.
Hang on a minute. You all right with that?
Well, they're two separate things though, aren't they? Like, one is to go out and promote Ramsgate and therefore take it with us. And then the thing is for them to be able to rent it, I'm assuming, or something, to be able to create revenue. So I don't think it's a case of like, like, for example, we go out to Margate to promote Ramsgate, but we're then going to charge people to use it. I thought, reading this, they were two very separate things. So I think that muddies the water slightly.
I thought the charging was for instruction, basically using it to instruct people.
Well, I just want to be clear, because I don't want to do them a disservice by putting something else in that, that's like, well, no.
Okay, can we, sorry, members, can we just read out exactly what they've, exactly what they're asking? Exactly the reason that they're asking, what they're asking for, please?
They'd like the caveat removed in order for them to be able to occasionally use this mobile skate park outside of Ramsgate to help generate more funding towards their project. Am I correct, aren't I? Um, and also to promote Ramsgate.
So effectively, effectively, if you, if you want to support this, effectively, your motion should just say it's to re, to remove the caveat.
Yeah.
And keep it simple.
To allow for occasional, and it would be very.
Yeah, but it's to remove the caveat.
Yeah, exactly.
Occasional use outside.
Yeah, but councillor, right.
But the majority of use will be in Ramsgate inevitably, because that's what we're about.
Keep it simple for the occasional use outside.
Remove the caveat.
The caveat.
Uh, to enable.
To allow occasional use outside of Ramsgate. Okay, is there a seconder for that? Councillor Heaverton. Okay, all in favour, please show.
Sorry, that wasn't, that wasn't.
One, two, three, four, five, six, those are gains. Two, three, four. Abstentions? One. Thank you, that's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all.
End of that one, okay, members, uh, we'll move quickly on. Michael at the time, for you. Um, item six, St Port Mayor's. To receive the notes from the meeting of the St Port Mayor's held on the eleventh of July, twenty twenty two to consider nominated a representative for a promotional working group. Yes, please.
Okay, um, town clerk has advised me that at the meeting, they decided to create a promotional working group and to give one place to each of the St Port or St Port limbs, uh, including Ramsgate. Um, and town clerk is advising, it doesn't have to be the mayor or deputy mayor, it can be another member of council. Um, and basically it's a nomination to be on that working group.
So is there anybody who would like to put themselves forward to be on that? Councillor Moore?
So what do they do, sorry?
I can if you'd like to.
Yeah, but, yeah, they sound very well, but if, if I'm going to take that on, that means I have to make my own way to these and they're due them to a different place. Bridgling Sea is the next one.
Okay.
And there's no way I can drive or even get somebody to drive me that far.
Fair enough, okay. Anybody?
Because I don't have access to the.
Okay, members, uh, as, as there is no one dying to do it, um, I would, I would suggest that, uh, we don't make a decision on this. And we just leave this open and see if anybody wants to go, councillor Crittenden?
If councillor Moore is willing to do it, as coupled with transport, is there any way that we can look at supporting that?
I agree, that's what I was.
I, I would probably think.
I don't see, uh, once we've got a driver, why is, wouldn't it be considered council business?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, but that, that is, the town sergeant is ostensibly the mayor's driver.
The town sergeant is for the mayor and her deputy.
Yes. The mayor and the deputy.
Yeah, this is mayor's business.
They should be employed by this council.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would do it if I had some.
Okay.
Bad midday.
There you go.
Excellent. You can have a nice.
Members, please, councillor Hapley.
Says in a note held electronically on Zoom, so maybe some of the meetings will be held. Just do it on.
Ah.
So. Someone's going to need to wait.
Think so, yeah.
Well, it says here that this one was.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, councillor Moore, if you, if you want to nominate yourself, I can put you down for it and I'll, I'll make inquiries with them exactly how this works, where the meetings are. Because this is a working group as opposed to the St Port Mayor's meetings. So we need a little bit, a little bit more information so that, um.
If it isn't more around the country, like.
Yeah.
The mayor's meeting.
Leave, leave that with me, if you're happy to volunteer, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We need to.
Well done. Um.
Oh, God, what are you doing?
Do it to me. Madam, sorry.
Propose a second.
All right, yes, sorry, okay, item seven, confidential matters, um, seven point one eight, exclusion of public and press.
I propose that.
Please propose councillor Heaverton, second, all in favour?
Lovely.
Thank you. Yes.